Good morning. A call to order, the Arapahoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting for today, February 14th, 2017. And to my left is Ron Carl, county attorney. To my right is Jolene Sanchez, Assistant Clerk to the Board. Ms. Sanchez, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Conti?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here. Commissioner Jackson, would you please lead us in the pledge?
First time. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carl, are there any modifications to the agenda this morning?
Yes, there's been a request to make one modification, and that is to pull the resolution appointing the Planning Commission members from 6D, which is on the consent agenda, and moving that item to be number 7C on the general business item agenda.
Thank you. I'm just going to circle that one. Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
I so move.
Second? Motion made by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Baker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have two sets of minutes, and everyone was present at both of those meetings. One was for January 17th, 2017, and the second was January 24th, 2017. Do I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Holland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let me make sure I've got, missed anything here? Okay, this is the time for citizens' comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that is not on our agenda this morning, please come forward. Morning, Ms. Fay.
I'm Diana Mays, BLCC Administration Manager, reading into the record for citizen JM Fay, who resides at 2575 South Syracuse Way, Denver, Colorado 80231. That's unincorporated. Sitting in on committee meetings at the Capitol allows you to get to know how some lawmakers are. Senator Neville, in particular, was talking to a state employee due to a commission that needed to be re-upped, and was asking her where this info and that was. And then he said, "You really don't expect us to agree to this commission being re-upped without this information because we have oversight on this committee." Not sure she got that, but we do believe the five of you do. The five of you have oversight on the board.
Oh, Diana, we're having trouble hearing.
Oh. Sure, yeah, sure. There we go.
Thank you.
Do you want me to start over?
I have some last sentence or something.
Okay. Not sure she got that, but we do believe the five of you do. The five of you have oversight on the board for the Arapahoe Library District. That is what the state librarian keeps telling us when we ask why we can't have elected boards for most of our library districts. You, however, are not exercising that right to provide oversight. There are two open seats on that board for which they are accepting applications from to the end of this week. We would ask not only do you not rubber stamps who they want -- it died. Rubber stamps who they want on this board, but you also ask the other hard questions because the residents of ALD are not all being treated fairly when it comes to who is getting services and who is paying for them. We do hope this board feels it's only fair that the people paying the taxes and the fees to ALD should be the primary beneficiary of ALD's services. Second, the farmer's market info is due in this week. To get into local markets, Cherry Creek, Stapleton, and many others, it can be $2,000 for the few months they run. You should be allowing cottage food producers who live in the county and who are trying to make a go out of a small business to sell here once a week and kick out Mountain Man. The Colorado Department of Egg, who puts out the booklet, only allows those in it who sell food with nutritional benefits, and there is very little nutritional value from the stuff Mountain Man sells. Again, until we get a change in the law to allow for the mailing, cottage foods cannot, can't sell their items but face-to-face, and we need a place to sell year-round. Trying to get in and out of our garage yesterday was aggravating. There is a large dent in the door courtesy of someone who most likely didn't sell like the pillars being put in and took it out like many others in the door. That panel, along with others, needs to be replaced again, and each panel is $300, plus the cost of them to come out is $90. And this is from some years back, so we expect it's more. We don't have that kind of money, and we also don't feel we should have to pay for something we did not damage. Yet again, the cost is on us. Commissioners, we have put up with this over 20 years. It has cost us greatly, and this is all due to the staff of our county and as well Cunningham Fire, who did not do their jobs and for which both of you don't want to accept responsibility for. Last time we checked, the buck stops with you, and you need to deal with this fairly so it stops. You apologize for the harm done to us, and there is a matter of compensation as well. The longer it takes to get resolved, the more it costs the county. Our birthday is next month, and an early birthday gift would be very nice. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Thank you, Diane.
Sure.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with our one modification?
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Jackson?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have one general business item and one public hearing. And our general business item is Eastern Slope Rural Telephone Association permit fee. And Mr. Robert Hill is our attorney on this matter. Mr. Hill, is there a foundation?
There is not. This is a matter for board determination. No public hearing, not quasi-judicial.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Haskins.
Morning. Chuck Haskins, representing the Public Works and Development staff. General Business Item 7A is a request from Eastern Slope Rural Telephone Association, requesting a waiver and/or a reduction in permit fees associated with a project that consists of about 70 miles of fiber optic cable going in the rural portion of Arapahoe County predominantly, or exclusively, in Commissioner Baker's district. The staff uses a, what's called a street cut and right-of-way use permit for these types of installations, and those permit fees cover the cost of administering the permit and inspection and acceptance services related to the installation. Eastern Slope Rural Telephone Association is proposing extensive upgrade of their existing copper lines with new technology fiber optic cables to provide state-of-the-art telecommunications services in the Bennett area of the county. There's a copy of the letter from them in your packet. The, also provided in your packet, a copy of the, of a street cut and right-of-way use permit. And based on the length of the installation, that is estimated to cost approximately $151,000. Staff is supportive of a reduction based on what we think needs to, the inspection services to provide on the project. So we have come up with a recommendation to assess them $500 per week of construction activity. In talking with Eastern Slope Rural Telephone Association, they support staff's recommendation. They don't have a presentation to you, but if you have any questions on the specifics of projects, they're available for that. So.
Mr. Haskins, I had one, and that was, if it's $500 per week, how does that relate to their letter of requesting, you know, 100, I mean, that the total would be $150,000? Had it, I was struggling a little bit to see.
Yeah, so the $151,000 is based on basically 25 cents per millimeter foot of installation. 70 miles equals approximately $151,000. They're looking, they're suggesting an alternative, that they pay the county a weekly fee for inspection services. I believe they've done something similar in other jurisdictions within, within their district.
And how long do they, how many weeks are they estimating?
I believe they're going into 2018 with the project. Fall of 2018 is when I heard they were estimating completion, and they were going to start this summer. So, so there's going to be weeks where the contractor may not be working, and we would not assess them for that. So, that's how the arrangement is proposed.
And your recommendation is you feel that this is fair for the amount of work that Arapahoe County is going to have to do?
Right. Staff looked at the fully loaded cost of our inspectors and estimated 10 to 12 hours per week, and that roughly came out to about $500.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes, this is a question for you, Chuck. I noticed in the VSR that, oh, wait a minute, I'm reading the wrong question. I think my question for this, this one was, I was reading the floodplain thing. I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. I think I have the same question about the $500 and that that cost would be covered. I apologize. I'll reserve my question for the next item.
Commissioner Baker?
Chuck, have we done this before?
You know, I don't think so. We have, I don't think we've ever had an installation this large. So, you know, on, on permit fees, there's very small jobs, like somebody's going to repair a sewer in front of their house. You know, that's roughly a $150 permit. And when you start having, you know, 70 miles of line, you know, it's probably, so my point is that, on average, the permits pay for, you know, pay for the cost of providing the service. The smaller projects, we probably take a loss on. The larger projects are, you know, we could make some money on. But we think it's fair to only recover the cost of services we anticipate that will occur on the project.
I just wanted to comment that I thought the VSR was very well-written. All the facts were in there, and.
Thank you.
I didn't have any other questions.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, um.
Pardon, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I prepared the draft motions, and after listening to the VSR, I see there's an error in here.
Okay.
I didn't have the per-week of construction activity. The intent is to approve the request, so I've added this to whoever wants to make a motion.
Mr. Baker. Thank you. Okay. If there are no further questions, is there anyone in the audience, let me ask, even though it's not a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience would like to speak
Diana Mays, reading into the record for citizen JM Fay, right here. The more, is that you? The more you reduce the cost to upgrade infrastructure, the more it costs the citizens' developmental needs to pay for itself. 500 per week is not of money, and if county makes money on this, the county can apply it to something else the citizens need in this county, specifically snow shoveling ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Baker?
I'd like to make a motion for approval if submitted. In the matter of the Eastern Slope Rural Telephone Association's request to waive or reduce the street cut permit and right-of-way use permit fees for the installation of approximately 70 miles of fiber optic cable within Arapahoe County Rural Rights of Way in the Bennett area, I have read the staff report and recommendation, have considered the telephone association's request and public comment, and hereby move to approve a fee reduction to the amount of $500 per week of construction activity for the project for the street cut and right-of-way use permits for this Eastern Slope Rural Telephone Association's fiber project for the approximately 70 miles of Arapahoe County road right-of-way specified for the fiber project with such permits issuance subject, permits issuances, subject to approval by the Arapahoe County Engineering Services Division of the Department of Public Works as provided in the Arapahoe County Infrastructure Design and Construction Standards Regulations or other applicable county regulation.
Motion made by Commissioner Baker. Do I have a second? Commissioner Conti, seconded. And, you know, I do want to comment here that this does help the citizens in Bennett when this cable is installed, so it will help the citizens of our county. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, all in, please, please say aye, be in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We have a public hearing agenda item, which is Land Development Code Amendment for Floodplain Management Regulations. And Mr. Hill, would you set the foundation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This matter has been noticed by publication in The Villager and the I-70 scout. The board has jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you. And our presenter is Mr. Haskins.
Morning, again, board. Chuck Haskins recommending, or representing Public Works in Development. Item 7B is a proposed amendment to our Land Development Code to update the Floodplain Management Regulations to reference the latest flood insurance study for the county, excuse me, and the, the latest flood insurance rate maps. A little background on this, the county has been participating in the National Flood Insurance Program since 1977. And based on that, our, by having higher standards, we have available for 15% reduction in insurance premiums for our residents who purchase flood insurance. So it's a real benefit for that, and we're eligible for federal disaster funding if, if the 100-year flood ever, if, if there is substantial damage from that. The process began for this, what's called the physical map revision in 2014. This is a process by which urban drainage is making their flood hazard area delineation studies what's called the effective floodplain through FEMA. There's basically two different types of flood insurance studies, one that is produced locally and one that's produced federally. So this is an effort through the physical map revision to take the study that Arapahoe County participated in with urban drainage and make that the effective floodplain. It, it affects six different drainage ways within the county, and so it doesn't, it doesn't affect the entire county, but FEMA makes reference the latest flood insurance study in our Land Development Code to stay compliant with the National Flood Insurance Program. So basically, the result of the change is in two places within the Land Development Code. We referenced the last study, which was December 17th, 2010. And so we're just proposing to change that date to February 17th, 2017, which is this Staff did not do an extensive referral process based on the administrative nature of this, but I will say that we did three public outreach meetings with Semsua, Urban Drainage, and FEMA, and we mailed specific letters to those property owners affected by the map change. There was a appeal period for this, and we did not receive any appeals within these six drainage basins. The effect of the map change put four structures in the, in the new floodplain. Those are located in Commissioner Sharp's district in Cottonwood Creek, three properties within Inverness Business Park, and one structure that is on the golf course, the family sports golf course right behind our, our offices on, on Lima Plaza. Those property owners are all aware of that, and we encourage them to either, to seek flood insurance. FEMA will offer the, a reduced rate for flood insurance, provided they get it before the maps go into effect. So, I don't have information whether they have flood insurance or they purchased flood insurance, but it certainly was suggested by, by staff. So that's essentially my presentation. I'm available, available for any questions the board might have.
Commissioner Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When did that, was that suggestion put out to the different property owners if they, that they would?
It was suggested in the outreach that we, the outreach public meetings we had, plus the letter that we sent them in 2014. So, they've, they've had a couple of years in, to obtain that, and we're encouraged again to do it before the maps go into effect if, because the cost goes up. We still get the 15% insurance, or discount, but the rates could go up if you're in, actually have structures in the floodplain.
Okay. Commissioner Holland?
Yes, it's my understanding that if you're in the floodplain and you have a, a federal government loan, that it's a requirement. So I think that issue should be informed to of these homeowners if they are, either have a VA or a HUD or FHA loan, that they would, under those provisions, are required to have it to continue their.
Yeah, we, we included that in the correspondence. And quite honestly, any, any mortgage these days, the lender is going to require flood insurance so that they can protect their investment in the property as well. So it's a pretty standard practice now.
Mr. Jackson?
Okay, I think this is the right topic. So I was reading this, and this is just a procedural matter. It says that the Planning Commission will review the matter on 27, so they've already weighed in on it, and they're.
Yeah, I neglected to mention that. I was in front of the Planning Commission last Tuesday evening, and they supported this and have a favorable recommendation 5.0 to the Board of County Commissioners. Apologize for that omission.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms., Mr. Haskins.
Thank you.
I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion, I think, which should be here. Here we go. Commissioner Jackson?
I can do it. In the case of W-17-001, concerning proposed amendments to the Land Development Code, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Modification of Section 1-505, Natural Hazards and Features Maps, and Chapter 12, Specific Resolutions, Modification of Section 12-2005.02, Basis for Establishing the Floodplanes and Special Flood Hazard Areas, to Update the Arapahoe County, Colorado, and Incorporated Areas Flood Insurance Study and Flood Insurance Rate Maps as Prepared by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to the new February 17th, 2017 maps. The Board of County Commissioners has read the proposed code amendment and the board's summary report, and has considered additional information presenting during the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings 1 through 5 set forth in the board's summary report dated February 2, 2017, with the code amendment to update the flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps as proposed, and hereby approve the amendment to Sections 1-505 and 12-2005.02 of the Land Development Code with the following two conditions of approval. One, all minor modifications to the text are required prior to incorporation into the existing Land Development Code. Two, the amended floodplain management regulations will be effective and integrated into the existing Land Development Code on February 14th, 2017.
Commissioner Holland?
I will second that amendment.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Holland. Any further discussion? Commissioner Holland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to commend the, our Planning Department for being able to bring us into compliance when there ever federal or state requirements coming, placing additional burden on it. But I appreciate your, your ability to get, to identify those and get those before the commissions who are in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holland. Okay, nothing further? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. We have one item that we pulled, which was, let me get back here, from our appointments to our boards and committees, and that was for Resolution Number 170. Did I do that right here? And it was for the Planning Commission. And one of the things that this board has talked about was trying, looking at our terms, which we have not had adequate time to look at, all of the terms for every board and committee, and then term limits. But one of the things was, again, is to look at those term limits and be consistent, and then we have not, across the board, enforce, may not be the right, exactly the right word, but enforce those, those term limits. I do want to say that for every board and committee, these, all individuals serve, are appointed and serve as representatives of their county commissioner, and they're appointed by them, by the board as it stands today. And so sometimes, as new commissioners come on the board, they will appoint, they have certainly the ability and right to change those appointments as they need it. One of the things that, on this particular board, was that, excuse me, we have not talked about, we talked about the need to have terms, but to have consistent terms, and I was notified this morning that we have one individual, if we are saying that it's a total of two terms before you are term limited, that's, we have one individual that was going to be reappointed that falls into that category of meeting the term limits that I was not aware of. It's absolutely an appointee for me. So I, I'd like to have the discussion. One of the things that I can do is pull this individual, I hate to pull the whole, vote on this next. on this next week, mainly because we have a week from today, the Planning Commission has some, a case on their agenda. And it would be important to know who is serving on that committee prior to that. So, I'm just asking for discussion or recommendations. I certainly can pull this one individual. I have not talked to her, so I think it's unfortunate, because I don't want to create a problem with her in pulling, which I will do today. So, Commissioner Jackson, did you...
Thank you. Yes, I think that every year when we gather to discuss appointments, there is some confusion about term limits and how long folks have served. And while I really am grateful for the service of our constituents, that they work hard and diligently for the county, I think it's also important that we bring some new folks and some fresh ideas onto these boards, and that's why term limits are there. And so, I think that it's painful sometimes to change, because, you know, it didn't used to be like that kind of response. However, I think somewhere, somewhere, we have to start the new policy of holding people to term limits, whatever those term limits are, and I know they vary from board to board. That might be something we want to take a look at. So, I would support, you hesitated over the word enforcing, but I would support holding people to term limits unless there's some kind of exceptional reason not to.
And I think we certainly talked about if we do not get, we're doing good outreach today, but if in a certain border committee we do not get new applicants, I think that could be something that would be an exception in the future. And I think in what we looked at, on the ones we did, we got great, really, citizen response, in fact, so good that we had some great people that we just did not have the positions for, and hope that we will be able to keep them, and that they can apply for some other position, or we will keep them if there's an opening on this one. Commissioner Holan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's, I agree with everything that's been said here. I think the, I serve on several community boards, and most are, have a very strict term limit on their, on their boards. And they do that because they want to bring in fresh ideas. They want to bring in new people with, that are either new to the community or a younger constituency that helps move more progressive and thoughtful discussions on the issues that they're, that they're looking at and contemplating. Secondly, I think we also have to realize that boards and commissions, particularly in the county and across the, across Arapahoe County, are really learning laboratories for people who want to be involved in government. And I think many of us came into politics here in the county due to that fact, that we all served on a different board, and we learned about the county functions, and then became confident that we could adequately represent our constituency. So, I think it's a great idea that we be a little more firmer, noting there are incidences where a waiver of those term limits is possible, and that's a decision made by the county commissioners. But I just think that we need to really reinvigorate our boards with a new, more of a variety of individuals from our constituencies, and new ideas, and I think that will improve, frankly, the processes of governance, which we all support. Thank you.
Mr. Baker.
Thank you. I agree also with everything that's been said. I just want to make sure that there are term limits, and we're going to enforce them, that the people are notified, and I'll make sure I notify the people I appoint, to let them know that there are term limits right at the beginning and upfront, if there are term limits. Not every board is the same. Some boards have a different function. It's not a one-size-fits-all for all boards. But I'm in favor of us discussing this specifically for the Planning Commission, because it is very important, and consistency, I think, is also important, as well as a systematic replacement of people on boards and commissions to allow the younger or newer members of those conventions to come in and learn from the people that have been on there for a while. And it's incumbent upon the experienced people on those boards and commissions to share that experience and to mentor and coach the new members into positions of leaderships on those, on those boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think on this particular, this particular board, I think we do need to be careful. We've got some people who've been on there for a long time, and in fact, excuse me, we made an exception, Mr. Rosenberg, who has been on there for 11 years, I believe, and done a very nice job, and very commendable job on this. He is chairing this year, so although he is certainly one of those people that falls into the term limits, we did feel like it was important to have the consistency of a leader of this committee who'd been there a long time and had good experience. So, that's an example of an individual that won't be reappointed for three years, but will be reappointed for one year, and so that gives a good chance for, for some transition. So, I would just make the motion that we approve this Planning Commission, and with the exception of this, the one individual, and she may be appointed, I don't, we'll have to talk about that, but Jane Reick, who is at the term limits, and we will have a discussion about how we proceed with this. And again, I apologize to her that I was not aware of this and did not contact her, but I will do that today. So, that would be... Mr. Carl.
Yeah, just for clarification, so what the motion is, is to approve the resolution as presented, but delete Jane Reick from the list of appointees, and instead show that position as vacant for the moment? Is that the motion?
Yes, thank you. That would be my motion. Motion made by Nancy Sharp, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All, any further discussion? Okay. Saying none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Jackson.
Yes. February is Black History Month. Oh, excuse me, Black History, Black, yeah, History Month. Created, it was actually created in 1926 as Negro History Week, but was recognized in 1976 as part of the U.S. Bicentennial. And Gerald Ford, I don't usually quote Gerald Ford, but Gerald Ford, I think, who actually introduced this, I said it well, so I'm going to quote him, "To seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history." And so, we celebrate and commemorate Black History Month, and I'd just like to put that on the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Holan.
I would just like to note the passing of a former Colorado resident, Lieutenant General Hal Moore. Hal Moore was immortalized in the film, "We Were Brave and Young," I believe was the name of it. He is a real hero from Vietnam, having survived the major battle, one of the earlier battles in Vietnam, where he had an enforced company and had to hold back a whole division of North Vietnamese soldiers, and successfully saved hundreds of lives in that, in that incident. The, he passed away yesterday, and had led, and has had a tremendous influence on helping, helping veterans of Vietnam and other wars. He also was the example that his wife provided, developed a system of notification of individuals who were serving with her husband's company in Vietnam, and notifying them of the passing of their spouse. And that became a policy of the United States Department of Defense and the Army through her efforts, and we'll certainly miss him. I've had the opportunity to meet both him and Mr. Callaway, who wrote the book on that incident. So, just wanted to acknowledge his passing.
Thank you, Commissioner Holan. Any other comments? Saying none, happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Meeting is adjourned.